During that time, I will call the April 5th, 2017 Wolfboro Board of Detective Order. Mr. Owen, do we have a reason for not? The minutes dated March 22nd, 2017. Were there any corrections?
Would you like a motion? I make a motion that we accept the minutes of March 22nd, 2017.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, temporary outdoor events permits. First one is the Kingswood Regional High School to hold the promenade on May 13th, 2017, at Kate Park and Wolfboro Community Bandstand from 5:00 p.m., 7:00 p.m. Is someone from the audience?
Evening, Jen French, senior class advisor at Kingswood. So I filed the permit. Promenade is something we've done every year for a long time. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there any questions from the members of the audience? Now I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
The fire department says please utilize the parking plan. That was previously approved. So there should be a parking plan approved. And if you don't, you can check it out with the fire department.
Okay, I will, because I'm not sure where that would be, Linda. So I'll make a phone call and see exactly what they let us to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Kingswood Regional High School to hold the promenade on May 13th, 2017, at Kate Park and Wolfboro Community Bandstand from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next public hearing is the American Cancer Society to hold the Relay for Life on June 3rd, 2017, at the NIC from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Hi, I'm Karen McBrien. I'm one of the co-chairs of the committee for the Relay for Life, local Relay for Life.
Mind just telling us a little bit about the event?
It's a... I'm trying to think. It's an 11-hour event from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Where we have teams that have raised money. The public's welcome. We're raising money for the American Cancer Society. We have games. There's music. We have lap themes. This year's theme for the event is Disney. So we'll have a lot of Disney stuff. There'll be food, games. People will be selling crafts, all types of stuff to raise money, and all goes to the American Cancer Society.
Open the public hearing. Is there any members of the audience who'd like to ask any questions? Are there any comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Only comment I have. In the past, they faced the music away from the residence area. And if you do that again, that would be great.
Yep, it'll be set up in the same spot.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you want to take a motion? Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you'll join us.
Next public hearing is the New England Limon Group to hold a boat show on June 10th, 2017, at the Town Docks, Wolfboro Community Bandstand, and two parking spaces adjacent to the bandstand, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Good evening, I'm Joe Williams of Wolfboro. I represent the New England Limon Boat Owners Group. And as we're applying for the special events permit, this will be our 18th year at the Town Docks. We expect probably between 20 and 25 boats. And these boats come from Vermont, New Hampshire, Maine, Connecticut. And our group, we have about probably 125 members, all the East Coast. But we, this attracts the local people. And these boats, we encourage people to bring the boats in either restored or unrestored. We want to see what all the different models were. The smallest boat is probably about a 12-foot Limon. And the largest one last year was a 30-foot Limon. And Limons were very popular on this lake. And we like to tell people, the viewers, people walking the docks, about the history of Limon boats. And there's no charge for anybody. Registration is free. This is just a fun day for everybody from 10:00 to 3:00. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there any members of the public that have any comments or questions? None, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I have two things. One, on the application, it says maintain access to the fireboat. And I also want to point out to the board that we have already approved a wedding at 3:30 at Kate Park. And I'm wondering if there's any way that you can address not being there at 3:30 and earlier, move to a little bit section, be quiet while the wedding goes on, something to help accommodate them.
No, that shouldn't be a problem, because by 3:00, everybody's anxious to get out of there.
Okay.
It's been a long day. And in fact, we were probably, next year, we're going to close it off at 2:00.
Okay. So if you can get them to move early, that will help them.
So we will make sure that we clear that area for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any board members? Do you want to take a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the New England Limon Group to hold a boat show on June 10th, 2017, at the Town Docks, Wolfboro Community Bandstand, and two parking spaces adjacent to the bandstand from 9:00 o'clock until 3:00.
Second?
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the bulk vote, which includes the Weekly Manifest, property tax abatements and refunds.
We got one other thing there.
Oh, we do.
We have the liquor fee.
We have an application, a permit to serve, an offer, sale, beer and wine, consumption in the Great Hall. Town Hall. Brewster Academy has made that application. Is there someone here from Brewster?
I'm Susan Replier. I'm the director of Special Events at Brewster. So we're hoping to have an event here on Friday, October 13th, this fall. It's Fall Family Weekend, and it's our live auction. We're hoping to have it here in the great room. So it's our premier fundraising event of the year. The audience is mainly parents, Brewster parents. So it'll be appetizers, and we're hoping to serve beer and wine, and use the stage for our live auction. It'll be from about 6:30 to 10:00 that night.
I'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment or have questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I have two questions. Mr. Owen, you said you had a copy of their liquor commission license in your packet? Okay, we're missing that attachment. I'm sure your caterer has that. It's just part of our application that we will need that. And the other piece we will need, your insurance policy ends July 1, and before the event, just give us an update.
Okay, so a copy of the liquor license and the updated insurance policy, which I thought you had, I apologize.
Well, you have it, but it runs out...
Expires.
...in July 1, 2017, and your event's in September.
Okay, good to know.
I'll second that.
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Okay, next we do have the bulk vote. Board members, are there any?
Mr. Owen, were you able to get a corrected amended trust on that current use? I emailed you saying that the current use application was not completely filled out? Okay. That's the only question I had.
I'll make a motion to approve the items listed on the agenda in items A through G of the bulk vote.
Second?
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none from the board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? Start with the running board of adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step down. I have a conflict, because my husband is a lawyer, and he goes before that board.
It's listed as two members for three years, an alternate member, two in three-year terms. Is Timothy Cronin here? Would you like to get up and say anything?
What would you like?
To introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Tim Cronin. I moved to Pork Hill Road about seven months ago. I was on the zoning board of appeals as an elected person for 21 years in Newtown, Connecticut. Enjoyed it, liked giving back to the community, so I figured I would apply up here and see if I could continue that.
Thank you. Thank you. Frederick Esche?
You mean I'll be back in town yet?
Suzanne Ryan?
Good evening, Suzanne Ryan. I've been a long-term member, maybe a decade or so, for the ZBA. I look forward, if reappointed, to the challenge of a new planning director, and hopefully some positive move forward to assist not only the applicants, but the ZBA board itself. It will be an interesting time, given the new person in charge. So I would look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a razor? Ryan, any razor?
Is Fred there?
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Racer. I am currently an alternate on the ZBA and have been for about a year and a half, and I think I'm ready to be a regular member if so approved. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Silk, and I've been an alternate also in the ZBA for almost two years. And I have had many years of experience on five other boards with the town, and very well versed in all the rules and regulations that towns have to follow in the RSAs. And I hope that I could continue to serve as a permanent member on the board. And Fred Tadashi just arrived.
Good evening, folks. I'm Fred Tadashi. I've served on the zoning board as an alternate for two years, and as a full member for three. But last year, I served as chairman. I would be very interested in continuing to serve on the board for the three years, if you so desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members?
I'll nominate her as one of the two permanent positions.
I'll second that.
Questions been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move that Fred Tadashi continues as a full-time member of the zoning board. Second that.
Questions been made and seconded on that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Two alternates.
Did we have one person that was leaving? We needed to fill in the rest of the term on, or is that done differently than tonight? I thought we had an opening of a person that has resigned and couldn't finish out his term this year. And that's through, what's the remainder of that term?
I'll second that.
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have the two alternates.
So I guess I would make a motion that Timothy Cronin and Suzanne Ryan be appointed to the two alternate terms.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conservation Committee Commission. Two members for three years, one alternate member for three years. Dan Coons?
Good evening, I'm Dan Coons. I live on Pointsill Road. I've been on the Conservation Commission for probably 15 years, and chair for the last 13. If you want to appoint somebody else to be chairman, I'll be happy to let him take over. But anyway, I'd love to continue for another term, and if you'll have me.
Thank you. Sarah?
I first got on the Conservation Commission, it was either, I think it was 1986. And except for three or four years in the early 90s, I continued to serve. I would like to be a part-time alternate member, because occasionally I cannot go to dredge and fill applications, so I don't feel that I should be a full-time member.
Well, we could fill two of the positions now. Right. Right.
You're correct, yes.
Leave, yeah.
We'll leave one full-time member. I'll make a motion that we approve Dan Coons as a full-time member. Second?
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve Sarah Silk as the alternate, as she requested.
Second?
Questions been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll have one more in time. Agricultural Commission, we have two members for three-year terms, and two alternate members for three-year terms. Lauren Strout?
She's not here.
And Sarah?
Is she going to be on every board?
I'm not. Just three, just three. I've been on the Agriculture Commission since its inception, and currently am vice-chairman. Lauren Strout is chairman. And I am an alternate, but I think it's more appropriate that I be a full-time member. We do have some members that don't come, so I end up sitting. But I think it's cleaner, neater if the vice-chairman is a full-time member, and I'm happy to serve in that position.
Thank you. Alan Fredrickson, or Carolyn? Yep. And Bree?
Hi, my name is Bree Shutey, and I moved to Wolfboro about two and a half years ago. I have a graduate degree in economics, primarily focused on rural economic development and agricultural communities. I have a corporate communications consultancy, where a large percentage of my clients are actually in the agricultural sphere, from, you know, large agro-fertilizers to small-scale farmers. And I've also spent significant time in Minnesota arranging special educational events between children and the farming community to help, you know, people understand the whole farm-to-table thing. So I'd be very interested in serving on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members?
I would make a motion to appoint Lauren Strout and Sarah Silk as full-time members.
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we have the two alternates.
I would make a motion that we do Bree, in your last name again, Shutey, and one of the two Fredersons, whichever one would like to serve.
I think Alan more.
Okay, so why don't we do Alan, then?
He's more apt to show up. I'll second that.
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee, two members for three-year terms, one alternate member for a two-year term. Kathy Eaton and Mike Roche.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Kathy Eaton and Mike Roche to the Economic Development.
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mill Foil Committee, we have four members for three-year terms, and two members for two-year terms. Kathy Barnard, Susan Goodwin, Kurt Deizer, Mark Martin, and John Russell. Anyone here that wants to speak?
Kathy Barnard, I've been on Mill Foil Control for a number of years. Can't remember how many, I'm sorry. And I think we're making some progress in Back Bay, so I'd like to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark Martin, 10 King Street. I've been on the Mill Foil Committee for two terms now. I've seen the results over the years, and I'd like to continue to be part of this organization.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we received two other applications just today, this afternoon. John Russell and Tom Obraka.
Obraka, yeah.
Tom Russell and...
What did I give you?
You gave us the wrong thing.
What I did? Well, I thought I had it here.
Who were they?
Somewhere in here.
One's Tom Obraka, and he's a member of the Lake Wentworth Association. And the Mill Foil Committee is trying to get representation from different organizations that have to do with water. So he is Lake Wentworth. I believe John Russell is a member, and is going to represent the boat museum. And he has those little skippers. And our mill foil really affects them, so it made sense that we add these two to the committee at this time. Okay, there it is, yep.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll point the first, first of the first four to the three-year terms, and then the...
Yes, two for two-year terms.
I got a motion to that?
I'll move that we appoint Kathy Barnard, Susan Goodwin, Kurt Deizer, and Mark Martin to a three-year term. And we appoint John Russell and Tom Obraka for a two-year term on the Mill Foil Committee.
I'll second that.
Questions been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wolfboro Energy Committee, three members for three years. Is James Nup, or I don't see Bruce McCracken here? So we're still looking for one more member for that committee. I entertain a motion to accept those two.
I'll move. Second?
Questions been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pathways Committee, three members for three years. Looks like we only have one applicant so far for that. Mr. Owen, did any more come in?
No, no, we haven't received much interest in the Pathways Committee.
I wonder if the two other men who was on the committee, they're out of town for a period of time. period of time, whether they realize their terms. Definitely George Vanderheiden.
Well, George Vanderheiden said he did not.
Did not?
Wish to stand for reappointment.
Okay, thank you.
Is the eyes and iris still around?
That must be the same thing with Peter Cole.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move that we appoint Fred Tedeschi to the Pathways for three years.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion?
I accept your nomination. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're still looking for a few more members for that. Anyone in the audience? TV. Information Systems Advisory Committee, it's one member for three years, Jim Collins. I don't see Jim tonight, so I entertain a motion to.
I'll move Jim Collins be appointed for a three-year term to the Information Systems Advisory Committee. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Fisher-Cavill Committee, five members for one-year terms. Have we received?
Put a big plug in that we need people to sign up. That committee definitely does. I think the chairman is away right now, and I'm hoping when she comes back, she will re-sign up, that's Lucy Van Cleef, but we need that event to go on, if we could ever have winter.
If we could. We have some nice ice houses and.
Yeah.
People spend a lot of time and effort, you know, doing that and having Wolfboro be involved in a wintertime activity like Fisherville will bring more people to this town in the winter. So, anyone on TV or if you're interested in joining the Fisherville Committee, you know, we've already laid the groundwork to bring people into town through a snowmobile path, and God willing, next year we'll have snow and ice, that we can do that, so we're looking for members for that. Heritage Commission is two members for three years. Rob, can't pronounce the last name.
Ettersen.
Rob.
Good evening. Sorry about my last name, I know it's a difficult one.
That's fine. Go get appointed, so.
I don't really have a lot to say. I've worked in historic preservation the last five years. I'm now the Operations Manager at the New Hampshire Boat Museum. My preservation philosophy is that people travel to places because of a culture and a feel of a place, and I think that the buildings of an area and how an area is designed is extremely important to economic development. So while I'm not obviously from here, I was not born and raised here, I've only lived here two months, I love it, and it would be an honor to serve the town and use my experience in the field of preservation to help to preserve the character of the town. Thanks.
Thank you.
You've got a very impressive resume.
Thank you.
Vaughn Duggan?
Hey, I.
No, that's a, if you're from New Hampshire, that's a joke. I'm on the commission now, and I would like to be reappointed. We're doing some excited things, exciting things, including helping people like the Pickering House people and the people who are interested in doing the, not necessarily clickety-clack, but historic railroad reproduction model at the old freight house and perhaps a barn survey and a, and a new chapter in the master plan. So we have a lot of work to do, and I'm happy to help.
Thank you. Board?
I'll make a motion to, to appoint Rob and Vaughn to the two open spots on the Heritage Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Kate Memorial Events Committee, three members for one-year terms, and I'm gonna kill this name too, Gina Fincherio, Kathy Barnard, and Philip Marbury.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was intended as a one-time committee, but they didn't expend all the funds last year, so they need more time to disperse the funds, the balance of the funds this year.
I have a question, Mr. Owen. I thought there would be income coming in each year from the trust itself. Have you checked into that? Because.
I can. My understanding was that was a one-time grant of thirty thousand dollars that.
There's still principal in the trust fund, is my understanding. I'd like that check, because I think there is still a principal there that will produce more income.
Kathy?
Kathy Barnard, I've been a member, it's a real feel-good appointment to be on the committee, and a lot of interest and a lot of really nice events that are being funded.
And Philip Marbury had the pleasure of serving on it last year, and we enjoyed it so much, we didn't want to get rid of the money, so we could do it again.
Thank you. Board?
I move that we accept the three applicants for the Kate Memorial Events Committee. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Trustee to trust fund, alternate for one year, Mary O'Brien, Dennis O'Hearn.
I'll move that we appoint Mary O'Brien, Dennis O'Hearn, trustee of trust fund. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move on to new business. Commercial vessel landings. We have the New Hampshire Boat Museum, Millie B.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Margaret Wood, and this is the sixth year that I have come before you to ask approval for that permit, and I'm happy to say for myself, it's my last year, and I came to introduce to you the new Millie B Operations Manager is Chip Earwiler, and you all, some of you may know him, he's just retired as the Facilities Director at Camp Belnet, so he comes with a lot of experience with boating and managing, so we look forward to having him on board. He and I are gonna be sharing the duties for a while, and then I'm gonna enjoy the summers, hopefully, if it ever comes. But we look forward to you approving the permit, so that we can continue to operate the Millie B. It's a great success for the Boat Museum and I think for the town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the only comment I have would be that the insurance certificate be updated when the renewal policy comes in, because this expires June twenty-first, so.
Yep.
Board members?
I'll move to approve and sign the commercial vessel landing permit for the Millie B for the 2017 season.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, thank you. Next, commercial landing permit would be from the Wolfboro Inn for the Winnipegi Bell.
Hi, my name's Tom Wood. Normally Lucy Van Cleef would be making the presentation tonight, but Lucy's not with the Wolfboro Inn anymore. I'm the lead captain on the boat, and I'm requesting that you renew our permit for landing. We don't anticipate that we're gonna be, any change from our schedule last year. The Bell is a, an asset to the town, I feel. It brings in a lot of revenue, ancillary to the, to the boat itself, and I hope you will approve it. Thank you very much.
Just the same thing on the, on the insurance certificate, it'll run out July first, so if the inn could just get us a copy of the new one when they have it for our records, so we can keep it on file. Board members, anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve and sign a commercial vessel landing permit for the Winnipegi Bell for the 2017 season.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Next, we have the renewal of license agreement with the Wolfboro Jet Ski Rentals.
Good evening, my name is Jake Baldwin, one of the co-founders and partners with Wolfboro Jet Ski Rentals. We've passed, I would say, four or five years, we've been gracious enough, the town's letting us, you know, lease the side of the dock on the back bay that's closest to Bradley's to operate our business. We're only open two months out of the year, so luckily the town's been, luck, helping us out for the past couple of years. We started in 2010, and we're hoping that we'd be able to, you know, go forward with our 2017 season and just kind of get ahead. I have the check ready for you guys, and our insurance, basically, it's, it's gonna be renewed June first, so I'll be making sure that you guys have a new copy of that when it renews June first.
So have we received the check yet?
I have it right here.
You have it? Yeah, he was gonna bring it with him this.
Okay.
We'll take that. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Board members?
No, I just have gone down there many times and seen that a lot of the jet skis are out, and it's been a real success for the town and for you guys, so.
Yeah, it's been, the last year, every year I've been able to come to you guys and say it gets better and better, and it's unbelievable. Last year was incredible, but I think we have, we're at like a twenty-three percent growth rate for the past three years, so pretty, pretty, pretty crazy how fast, how many people come to the town to rent jet skis and stuff.
I'll make a, a motion to approve and sign the license agreement renewal with the Wolfboro Jet Ski Rental for the 2017 season.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have the deed for the property at 422 Governor Wentworth Highway. Mr. Owen?
Yes, this is just a formality, and in fact, this is the, the quitclaim deed to convey the property at 422 Governor Wentworth Highway back to the previous owners, now that they have paid all of the outstanding property taxes and interest and penalties.
Yeah, we want to write it out just like this, too, so.
Want me to read it?
Sure, that'd be great.
I move that the board vote to convey the property located at 422 Governor Wentworth Highway, tax map 166, lot one, which the town acquired by tax collector's deed to Jeremy Gray and Barbara Gray, the record owners of the property at the time of the tax collector's deed, in consideration of the payment of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents, the amount of back taxes, interest, and costs as defined in RSA eighty colon ninety.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, under new business, authorization of lease agreement for hardware and software lease, Mr. Owen?
Yes, this is just, this, this particular lease company wants a copy of a resolution authorizing entering into this lease agreement and authorizing the person that's gonna sign the documents. Most of the lease agreements we do don't have that provision, but this one does, so it's just an additional step and security, I guess, for the lease company that everything's properly authorized.
Board members? Okay. So I can make, resolve to approve, authorize in the town to enter into a lease agreement with municipal leasing consultants, its agents, or assignee for hardware and software equipment, and to authorize the town manager, David Owens, to execute all necessary documents used therein.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Does the board have any old business?
I thought we had a letter to go to the town of New Durham zoning board of adjustment.
Yes, you do. And I've got hard copies of it here, and there's a, an original copy in your to-be-signed file here.
Tom, do you have this? The resolution for New Durham? We do have it on Microsoft Word, so you don't have to redo it if you want to run that.
I thought the letter was, I read it today, it was, it's very well-written, it addressed all the issues.
That was very well-written.
I had asked Mr. Owen to add in the first sentence of the letter, in the first paragraph, the town of Wolfboro Board of Selectment, after consultation with the town planner and Public Works Director, writes this letter, and I wanted that because there were some similarities in the writings between one that Kathy Barnard sent, and I wanted them to know that we had taken some time to look at this. This wasn't just something that we signed, but something that we really care about and spent some time. I am going to be there, and Dave Senical is going to be there, and we'll either read portions or, you know, or point out portions to them at that meeting and be there to represent the town.
Any other old business? Any other business?
I have one thing under old business and/or any other business. I also want to point out that we need members of the board to go to the workshop with, special workshop with Moltenborough Tufton Borough, that is also on the eleventh, and at six-thirty in Tufton Borough, either Dave Senical or I can go, and I was hoping another member or two of the board would go to that also.
I'll go to that, definitely.
Go look again?
Definitely, yeah.
I was gonna try and go, but I did find out I had two other things going on that night that the wife made me choose already, so I am committed that night.
Okay.
When is that?
The eleventh. Any other, other business from anyone else? Town managers report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've got a few things to report out this evening. First, the bid opening for the Center Street reconstruction project happened the week before last, and the low bid this time was in the amount of one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, that's the base bid, and GW Brooks of Freedom, New Hampshire, is the low bidder. That's the same company that did the Milton Road project a couple of years ago, so they're familiar with us and we're familiar with them, and that's probably for the, the better. And right now, the bid's being reviewed by the New Hampshire DOT, because they have to sign off on it, because they're paying for two-thirds of the cost of it, so we're sort of waiting to hear from them at, at this point. But it looks like we have enough money appropriated this time around to, to cover the, the contract and all the, the other costs that go with it. We've had some personnel changes. We had, one of our apprentice linemen has transferred to the Public Works Department, where he'll be working as a heavy equipment operator, has a CDL license, so he should fit in well there. We also have a new police officer who we hired from Moltenborough. His name is Jared Ballou, and he was sworn in here in this room last Thursday. And we also have a new call firefighter who also works as a, an EMT for the ambulance service, for Stewart's Ambulance, so. an EMT for the ambulance service, for Stewart's Ambulance, so he's going to be doing double duty. Tomorrow evening, there's the Scenic Roads Workshop. It's going to be right here in this room, and I wanted to remind board members about that and encourage some of you to consider attending. You've already covered the regional select boards meeting, so you covered one of my items there.
The date on this has been changed, you know.
Yes, the, our hometown Wolfboro premiere screening has been scheduled, going to be on Tuesday, the 11th. It's a popular day all of a sudden, and that's going to be from 5:00 until 8:00, I believe, at the Village Players, so you can see the show. Of course, it's going to air on TV. It's going to be on TV, I think, two nights later.
Yeah, 13th.
Thursday.
13th?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Eight o'clock? We have that channel level.
We received today a court decision in the Families in Transition Appeal, and the ZBA was sustained and the appeal was denied. So, that decision is in. I have a copy of it here if any of you are interested in reading it, or I can send it out to you electronically. Also, I wanted to mention, as you know, most of the town was, those that are served by Metrocast were without service for about three days during the blizzard event a few weeks ago, and Metrocast told everybody that they would get a credit for the time that they didn't have service. Well, it turns out you don't get that credit automatically. You have to call them individually and ask for that credit. They'll give it to you if you ask for it, but otherwise you don't get it.
How much is it per citizen approximately?
Well, in my case, it was like $17 and something, so I guess it's worth the call, but... I think that pretty well covers everything on my list. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports. Start down, Brad.
Let's see, I had, a couple of weeks ago, we had a Friends Libby meeting, went over some things there, worked finalizing budgets. Introduced Alana, came to it and was introduced to the board there, and then obviously we were all here yesterday for the election that we had here, and it was fun not having to have the machine count, and we had to do the hand count for everything, so that was interesting. That was it for me.
I had a ZBA meeting the other night and elections yesterday.
I would like to give some of the results on the election. For the Republican, Matthew Platch won with 334 votes, and on the Democrat side, Edie Demarest won with 342 votes. There are a few write-ins and other stuff, but these are the two winners. That's all I have.
I participated in a nice old-fashioned paper ballot hand-counting election also.
I thought turnout was good considering...
I thought, yeah, yeah.
It was a nice day.
Yeah, I figure if you do the totals, it was pretty close to 800.
Yeah, it rained all day. I mean, Wolfboro residents have turned out in the last two storms, so...
They have, they have, they have.
Questions from the press?
Sure, I've got it here.
I want to know why public... Is not right after the agendas. Why do we go and publicly go, have a listen to all this and agendas don't? Why are we right after the people who put out the agenda? Why do we have a listen to what we have to say? If they don't, they can just speak to this what they have to say and they leave. Answer me why? Now, are you ready for me? I will import. My name is Josephine Amatucci and I have one page. Now, I have good news. I have a case before the federal government, and they have allowed me a jury trial for all the injuries our town officials have caused me by defaming my name in the newspaper and at the selectmen meetings, when they lied to the public, telling them that my lawsuits caused the town people more than $30,000 of the taxpayers' money for filing my four lawsuits. The federal government, however, agreed that my four lawsuits were for damages, and it is the town insurance company, Primex, who pays for lawsuits for damages, not the taxpayers. So I am being allowed a jury trial for damages. I am asking for $500,000, which is even too little, in damages against the former Chief Chase, the former Rob Housman, and the former Officer O'Brien, who I got rid of, and the town, and the town officials, for infliction of emotional distress for what they did to me, for all the lies they told the public about me, in defamation of my character, for my unlawful imprisonment, for a Fourth Amendment malicious prosecution, where the former Chief Chase unlawfully seized me in 2014, accused me of speeding when I was not speeding, and they found me not guilty. The judge said I was not speeding. They, Chief Chase, put me in jail and he maliciously prosecuted me. For the crimes that all of you have committed against me, when you defamed my character to the public by accusing me of filing lawsuits that caused the town taxpayers $29,000 of the taxpayers' money, when the truth is, my four, only four lawsuits, yes, and it is the town's insurance carrier who pays for these lawsuits. This is called a defamation of character, when you all conspired together to issue a no trespass order that I could not enter the town hall or the police station against me without first giving me my right to a hearing, which is required under the due process law of the Fourteenth Amendment, where I could have easily have proven that I did not cause a disturbance in the town hall, when you all conspired to set me up in a pursuit to unlawfully seize me before I got to the sheriff's office, where I was going to lodge a complaint against Chief Chase, who threatened me and assaulted me in the police station because I was accusing the criminal officer Dean Brondo. You're getting out of this town!
Ms. Amatucci, you're 30 seconds over already and you're out of order.
This is not, this is a redress of grievances.
And you refer, you refer to him as chief, and you refer to me as chairman.
I guarantee you!
You're out of order and your time is expired.
No, I am addressing my First Amendment rights.
You're out of order and your time has expired. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
By the way, Chief Chase, if you want him, he's a failure in the...
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion to adjourn?
I would love a motion to adjourn.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?